Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the executives, or I'm sorry, welcome to the work session on the Board of Commissioners. This is the ninth public session of the year. The board met in executive session tonight at 6:00 and it was, it is advertised that we are meeting for a library issue, but we are actually met for a legal matter. On the agenda tonight, we will be making an amendment that in the beginning of our session, we will have the library have, make a presentation to us. Today is Monday, June 5th, 2017. And if you would please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Leiva?
Here.
And Mr. Connel.
Thank you very much. If you'll please rise, Deputy Chief, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Thank you.
Oh, that was nice.
Nice work.
All right, on the agenda, as I just said, we usually have the construction manager update, but we will start off with, Monica, if you will please come up to the podium as President of the Library Board and a presentation on the library.
Thank you. This evening, I'm Monica Bocelli, President of the Board of Trustees for the Harrah for Township Free Library. With me this evening is Scott Lowe, who's Vice President of the Board of Trustees and also Board Chair of the Building Committee. I also have with me Rochelle Nocido, Acting Library Director, actually, Library Director for the Harrah for Township Free Library. What we're going to go over with you this evening is
Chris.
Can you hear me?
Sign development status for the library, the project financing and renovation budget, the estimated project costs, fundraising for the renovation. Might add the, Rochelle Nocido and her staff have worked, and I think you'll find there's a slide on all of the different fundraising avenues that she has opened up that are new. Yes, can you hear?
Yep.
Okay, I'll get a little closer to this.
I think it's on.
Is it on? Okay. And the renovation schedule. But also, we, there'll be slides on the options for pros and considerations for the construction start date, moving estimated and preparation timeline, which was diligently worked out again by Rochelle Nocido, who really dug in, and also looked at different sites, satellite sites for the option of, one of the options. She has reached out to the community and found some very wonderful opportunities to give you another option to potentially consider. And then finally, the library's proposal. So to start, I'm going to introduce Scott Lowe to take you through the construction and design phase of the presentation.
Thank you, Monica. I might want to go back one here, where's the, oh, that, right there. Great, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so let's start with the project status. Really, the project status is the design status, they're more or less the same thing, since the project is currently in the design phase of the sort of execution. We have just completed, meaning, my guess, in February, the design development stage for the project. Design has three phases. The design development stage is the second of the three phases. The first phase was really investigative. The second phase is meant to put the design together, we've completed that phase. The next phase will be to develop construction documents to put out to bid so that we can begin the renovation project. The pictures you see before you, that's the current front door to the right-left, excuse me, that's not what we want to do. I'm going to use this one, okay? To the left is the current entrance to the library. To the lower right is the current rendering for the renovated library. Most of the work you see for the renovated entrance is really to make the library fully ADA compliant. That yellow tower you see there is an elevator that will now be at the front door as opposed to the back door. There's also stairs and handicap ramps and a fairly elaborate entry system to allow the library to be used many different ways. In other words, so that people can use the basement for a community room and still have the library up above locked and secure. So the purpose of this renovation that you're looking at there is really to both become ADA compliant and also allow the library to be used many different ways. Moving on. This is another rendering, we have two renderings right now, renderings are pretty expensive. So the second one was to give you some sense of the interior spaces. This interior space, if you've ever been in the existing library, there's a two-story former bank area, it's a former bank, and this is what we call it the living room, but it's really a reading room. There's books all the way around it, there's in the far corner there, the old front door to the library, there's actually a performance space as well. The fireplace is sort of on a wish list, I don't know that it's all that crucial, but the idea is to have this be a place, not only where you could come to read most of the time, but also where the community could congregate, where we could do readings and other events that the library sponsors. Most of that is there now. So, for example, the fairly elaborate entrance to your left, that's the existing structure. It's a pretty dramatic space and we want to make sure we take full advantage of it. So, as part of our planning effort, we wanted to make sure that we did very careful estimating at each step in the design phase, because we don't want to end this project, you know, way over budget. It's important to us to stay within our budgets. So at each step in the design process, we have an independent estimate, but performed by an independent estimator, not the architect. We have completed the design development phase estimate, and I'll get into the details of that here in a second. But before I get there, I want to talk a little bit about funding. We were awarded the Keystone Grant, we were awarded the maximum grant that you could earn, $500,000. It's been matched by the township generously. It's a requirement that it be matched, but the township certainly has done that. There are two dates that are established in the grant. One is for startup of the project, we've complied with the requirements for the startup date, but there's another date at the other end, the project should be completed by December of 2018 as part of the grant requirements. So that would be a year and six months or so. By the way, we got some pretty good compliments on the grant application. Rochelle, who ran that effort as well, did a really spectacular job, and we got an awful lot of accolades for the detail and comprehensiveness of the grant. It was a huge undertaking. This is our understanding of the current budget for the renovation project. Mostly, we're talking here about the financing, where the money's going to come from. The budgeted township contribution, as we understand it right now, is $6,750,000. The Keystone Grant provides another $500,000. The contribution that has been made by the library is another $500,000 for a total project renovation budget, as we understand it, of $7,750,000. And that's the number we're targeting for this project. So, how are we doing on our targeting? Well, we have a little adjustments, some adjustment to make in our targets. The total project renovation budget, as I just mentioned, $7,750,000, based on the completion of our last independent estimate, which was the design for the design development phase, we're at $8,131,000. So we're $381,000 over that budget, about 5%. There are two alternate items that also are being considered. They're not, they may not be necessary, meaning we may not have to expend these funds, but that could cause an additional overrun of $185,000 if we have to do both of them. And this, these numbers that I'm giving you here assume that we start the renovation project in January of 2018. And more about that later. Here is a breakout of some of the, of how we get to that $8,131,000 cost. The biggest number there, obviously, are the renovations themselves, which include, you know, dramatic changes in the HVAC system, in electrical system, the construction of the new elevator and the new lobby area, and, you know, that's basically what's in the renovation number that you see there. There's obviously some numbers that we've carved out here to look at things like new windows, renovated windows. Specifically, there's an item here called the Makerspace, that's one of a, sort of our signature portions of the renovation. Libraries now are not just places for books, they're places where the community comes together and they do things like make music together and do projects and many things that, that I think Rochelle could describe a lot better than I'm going to be able to. But bottom line is, creating the Makerspace, in order to create that space, we intend to lower the floor of the basement underneath the old bank building. And that creates a lot of extra space for, and creates a place for the Makerspace. So you can see our hard construction costs there are about a little over $5 million. We have built-in escalation on that number, there's allowances for bonds and markups, and there's, of course, a little contingency in there for errors in the estimate. So the total hard construction cost budgeted there of $5,876,000 plus soft costs, which I haven't broken out, but soft costs include the cost of the architect and the CEM and any number of other components that don't really relate specifically to the construction of the renovation. For example, new furnishings and things like that are in soft costs as well. Some of the technology is in soft costs. In terms of fundraising, I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle to talk about the status of the additional grant applications, but the first fundraising effort, which we performed jointly with the township, was to raise the Keystone Grant of $500,000, and I'll let Rochelle talk about
Okay, thank you.
... the other components.
Very quickly, about two months ago, I hired Scott Oldham as the grant writer for our library. He's done an outstanding job. We've applied for the Gladys Brooks Foundation Grant for $100,000, MKM today. I wrote that grant, and we were awarded $30,000 over three years. And we're, we have other grants out there, Ethel Sargent, the Nelson Foundation, the Home Depot. But most importantly, these grants want us to form a partnership with nonprofits in need. So we have actually reached out to the Boy Scouts, because those kids have brains, we need their initiative to move forward in our library. So we're looking for partnerships also while we're doing this, and everything seems to be going in the right direction. Right now, the renovation schedule, you want me to do this, Scott, real quick?
No, I can go with that if you want.
Okay. I just wanted to say, besides this fundraising through grants, we have formed partnerships with Rich and Janela Ogle, and they gave a night at the races for us in honor of the Kentucky Derby, and in one evening, we raised over $8,000. And they paid for everything, all we had to do was bring our guests. So it was an excellent fundraiser. So we are searching for different ways to raise money for our soft costs and for our technology. Our big component is technology and the Makerspace, and that Makerspace is an area where people come and create. We will have a portable kitchen area, we, besides a regular kitchen, we'll have a portable kitchen area, we'll have sewing machines, then we'll have some carpentry tools. We will have an innovative, we will have innovation, strong innovation, in our computer system, so our, our customers can make three, can print their ideas onto our 3D printers. We want our customers or patrons to move forward with their thinking, and this Makerspace can do it. I mean, it's great to come and get books, I love to read, boy, but don't kids and adults like to have the opportunity to create? And we're looking for that money through many fundraising expos. Scott?
Thank you, Rochelle. So, the schedule. Right now, we are what we call pencils down, meaning that the architect is not incurring any additional costs, we're not incurring any additional costs with the project at all at this moment. Ultimately, the renovation, we have estimated, will take nine months. The architect has indicated to us, has told us based on our questioning, that they really need to get started preparing construction documents by July 1. And there's really two reasons for that. One is, if we were to start the renovation in January, we'd have to have construction documents on the street, out to bid, probably in October, maybe November, so we could start in January. And that's, you know, there's a fair amount of work to do in July and August and September to get it, put us in that position. In addition, as you can tell, we're a little Over budget. So, associated with that completion of construction documents, we really need to do a value engineering process to make sure that we bring the project values or the cost down within our budget. And value engineering, it's a standard process in the construction industry, people do it all the time, but it takes a little time, and we need to get going so that, at the end of the day, we can be confident that we're going to put a project out to bid that will come in within our acceptable budget. So that's really what, what the architect has told us. And when I talk a little bit about our proposal, we're basically going to ask that we be able to start the architect up on July 1, if possible. So there are a couple of options that, well, there's at least two options, I guess is probably the right way to say it, at least two we're going to talk about tonight with regard to the schedule for renovating the library. The first option would be to close the library in March and start renovation in April. And those dates are, you know, there's a little bit of movement available there, but keep in mind, we have nine months to construct and we want to be done by December 2018, if at all possible, because that's when we're supposed to be done in accordance with the Keystone Grant. So that's kind of how these pieces all fit together. Nine months, April, if you include April, it's nine months to December, and that means we finish right on the date we needed to finish.
Scott, I don't like to, and I apologize, I want to apologize
No problem, no problem.
Because I don't like when people stop me. But I think this is more for Rochelle. Rochelle, if you could, I need you to get something out to Edward, I forget Edward's last name, I had an opportunity to meet with him, with Donna.
Lupina.
Lupina, thank you. I made it clear
Oh, from the, from Keystone, from Penn?
Yes. I made it clear to him when I had the opportunity to meet with, with Donna, maybe a month, month and a half ago
Yes.
That we could not commit to such a date. Again, I only work for the, you know, for this board, but, you know, we, we, the township work, were, could not guarantee that that, because of the township running late on our construction project, as well as we still need to borrow money, we didn't, we don't know when this board is going to do that. He made, I was, I could be wrong, but I made it perfectly clear that we couldn't guarantee. He had said to me that, as long as the township and the library spend at least the amount of money in the grant, the $500,000, that we were okay.
Okay.
I keep, so I think you need to clarify that, and I would, would ask that you get that in writing.
Well, and this is for December 2017, like to move out by December 2017 and hope for the best, but you're saying, you're saying that's off?
Well, I don't, I'm nervous about hearing this, for some reason, you don't complete that we're, we're avoiding that Keystone Grant. I did not get that.
I didn't, I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Okay, I don't feel that.
As long as you get a clarif, I would like to get a clarification in writing, if we could, that as long as the township and the library spend at least that amount of money, that we're going to get reimbursed for that grant.
Well, I'm, I'm sure of it, because we've spent some of that money already, okay? So, but what you're saying specifically is, you will not be ready come January 2018?
If something happens and, and the project
Miracle.
does not get done by April 2018, I want to make sure that the Keystone Grant is not in jeopardy.
I don't think it would be.
I think we're talking, I think you're talking past one another.
I do have a slide, I do have a slide that says that we did ask for an extension, extensions are given, yet they are not appreciated, okay, by the state of Pennsylvania. They're given, if we defend our position enough, and they will extend the timeframe for the money. But we really have to put in a request for it. And at this time, we haven't, because we did spend some of the money already, and then this is up in the air, you know, as far as I'm concerned, with the startup date. But I do have an understanding that things are lagging, but it's, it's not because you don't have the heart, that you want to see the library open, and I really want to see it open, you know, and renovations and all, so I do understand what you're presenting, yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to show you anything else, then, or is your mind?
That's the only question I have.
Oh, but I do understand that, I do, and I think we all do. We're just trying to see if we can make it as easy as possible for us. And I will tell you, over the last month or so, there's many pros and cons to this, you know, and considerations to opening the lib, closing the library in December of 2017. And I'm going back to that, just so you know, I did find some alternate sites for our library program. The Annunciation Church is very willing to open their school to us. Here's the Annunciation BVM, Father Cox. They will be charging us some money to rent out that space, but it's an excellent space with fabulous classrooms, and I would set up a temporary library there. And it's a wonderful space. In addition, we have the Temple Lutheran Church with Father, with Pastor Tim, and they are very happy to see us. They're, both, both pastors, their main requirement is to put somebody on the door, but we can set up temporary libraries. So we, I was planning, just in case, if a miracle took place, and we could close in December and open at alternative sites in, in January 2018, if that would help the process. And if it's, if it doesn't, it doesn't. It's, you know, it's, I understand the money is an issue, and I understand, we all do at the library. So anyway, I found alternative sites that we could move our library to. Here's Mr. Denny. Mr. Denny also has invited us to use the Kreck in the evening, a few nights during the month, for some of our evening activities. I was going to ask the Commissioners, actually, if at all, we could use this site, right, this building, for some of our evening activities in the, you know, that we couldn't do at the churches. The churches have constraints 10 to 4, because of their issues in the evening, not their issues, but they have activities in the evening. So we would only have day hours, 10 to 4, and then hopefully, we would find other places to have our, our night events. And so I, we did, I did that. And then lastly, thanks to the Kreck, I'm trying to connect to the high school. I'm, all right, I'm, and I'm trying to connect with the public school system to see if we could use the middle school for any of our teen events, to keep, to keep the library program up and running. I don't want to close the library's program totally, because our patrons love library. You know, our, our taxpayers, well, I don't want to go into Texas. Just let me tell you, people love to come to library. Now, lastly, for us to move to satellites, I have to consider moving the library. I've investigated over 10 library movers, they do not have storage, so they came in at about $155,000 for two moves. That's to move out of the library and then to move back in. So every time we go to move from the Annunciation or Trinity and move here to the Township Building, it's going to cost us a minimum of $5,000. So we're all excited about moving here, but the, you know, this office building won't be ready for us, but we can only hope. And then finally, the Wayne movers, they come with storage, storage is a big issue, and they came in at $189,000. I wanted to tell you that we have over 2,400 boxes of books, and, plus our furniture and computers, we have so much. And to find a storage space, I've been calling around, it's about $36,000, $36,000 for storage. So it's not a win-win in that category for us. Next, we have the Riley and Sons movers, they seem very willing, they're coming out to estimate us again, well, to estimate us come Wednesday morning. So, in preparation, if we close or if we run, we just want the library's program to, to continue. It can continue quietly somewhere, or continue where it's located. But I'll tell you, we will have good PR if we really open at the churches and at the Kreck, and at the different satellites that we're trying to bring in. It's very good PR, because many people want to form partnerships with the library. So I think that's, that's about it for me. And then we have the option cost comparison, and that's Scott or Monica. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rochelle. Monica, we actually have like two minutes.
Okay.
You're good.
Here we go. I'll do it real fast here. Let's look at option one, we have two options. The operational cost comparison of the current location to the Township Building. Option two is satellites to the Township Building. If you look at the total savings at the bottom there, it's $308,000 we would save by using the satellite option, starting the construction earlier and going to the satellites. That includes all the moving costs, even the moving costs going from, so all of the costs in general, if you look at the operational cost, it's $329,000 at the satellites, it's $472,000 at the option one, going from the current location of the library to the Township, directly to the Township Building. The second option means you're spending four months at the, at satellite locations that Rochelle has secured for, for the library. The capital construction cost will be zero. The capital construction costs on option one are $165,000. So the total cost to stay at the current location and move to the Township Building and delay the construction would, would be $637,929 versus the $329,636. The operational savings and capital savings are outlined, there's none on the delay, and there is $308,000 total savings on, if we take advantage of satellite choices that, that Rochelle has secured. And I also wanted to say, when you think about the Keystone Grant, I want to also mention the $500,000 for the Keystone Grant. The grant that Rochelle put together, the representative told us it was the finest grant they have ever seen submitted to the state. He was extremely impressed by this grant, and I don't want to underestimate, and that was put together by the current, by Rochelle Nocido. Single, yeah, single-handedly, it was amazing, and she did it in record time, it's just a period of time. So I just wanted to mention that once again. And this is really the optional cost comparison, and it's also, if you look at the services that will be provided, we will still, the level of service is, is excellent with both options, so the community will still have a, a library to go to. And as Rochelle had mentioned, there's the PR in using satellite offices, or satellites sites. Finally, the library's proposal, and I'm going to bring this to Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Monica. So just to kind of wrap it up here quickly, what we're proposing is that, right now, or by July 1st, we be allowed to basically pick our pencils up and begin the preparation, really embarking on the value engineering process and, and then moving into really embarking on the value engineering process and then moving into construction documents so that we can get our bid packages together. And the actual decision as to whether we start the renovation in January, or April, or whenever, it doesn't have to be made right now, but it will have to be made probably, we think, by the fall. Because we will want to, you know, we'll have to put stuff out to bid in order to be able to start construction in January. So that concludes the presentation.
Okay, Scott, thank you very much. Monica, Rochelle, thank you very much.
I have a question. Yeah. I don't know which of you can answer this, but, you know, we talked about a $70, $800 budget. Do you, what's driving the over-budget? The $300,000 to $400,000? What's driving that right now?
You don't need that again, do you? Yeah, there you go.
Oh, no, I want my flash drive.
Oh, the answer to the question is a little bit of everything. In other words, there's a little bit here, and a little bit there, and a little bit there. And I think we already have some ideas from the architect as to things we can cut. For example, in the community rooms, one of the ideas we had was to be able to divide those community rooms up using movable partitions. Turns out movable partitions are pretty expensive, $70,000 or $80,000. So there are several places, and that's just one off the top of my head, where we have some savings opportunities. But we really do need to, I guess the right way is think about them, and, you know, choices will have to be made too, and we want everybody to be able to have the right voice in that choice. But there are lots of places, I think ultimately, where we can have some savings. Tells you there are lots of places where we're...
So is your intent to try to minimize that over-budget part?
Exactly, exactly. We're committed to that, I think is the way I would say it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is there, I didn't see anything in the budget that factors any kind of external fundraising. Are, is there going to be any kind of campaign on the part of the library, whether it's a subcommittee of the board or anybody, to undertake fundraising to assist with the library renovation?
I think Rochelle's in the best place to answer that question right now.
We're in the process now of coming up with a theme for fundraising, and it should be rolled out within a month. And we are doing major fundraising campaigning. We are also going to businesses throughout the southeastern part of Pennsylvania. We're doing, we are surging forward with our campaign. And yes, one of our ideas today, I was talking about book it, book it for books. You know, I said, you know how people book it to run? Well, let's book it in a run for books. And then, you know, somebody said, oh, everybody does a run. And a run, a run's not a big thing, but we are thinking of ideas to move forward to raise money. I mean, absolutely, we want to have a major fundraiser going forward, and our campaign is to, is race for renovation. You know, race to the renovation. I mean, that's a simple phrase, but, and then we're going to make, you know, make the flyers and do a big campaign. If we have to go door-to-door, we'll go door-to-door. If we have to go to auto dealers to speak to managers, we will do that. We are setting out to say, to raise money, we are. So I can assure you, we are all conscious of raising money, okay?
Okay, no, I appreciate that. I mean, I assume things like naming the rating room and things like that, I mean, that's all in play, right? I mean, you're going to think about...
Oh, we have, we're trying that. We want to name rooms, we want to name book stacks, we would like to name different computers, you know, we could have the Nocido, the Nocido hub, or, you know, Mr. Connolly, you know, maybe, Mr. Connell, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Yep, there you go.
You know, maybe we can have a room after him. I mean, Mr. Gentili.
$50,000, you got a room, eh?
So anyway, we are trying that also.
Can I have the comic book collection? I'll take that.
You're getting the bathroom.
Okay, so we're trying our best. And I'd like to stay in touch with you, and I can, Commissioner Holmes. Okay, thank you. And I will stay in touch with you, and I will tell you how I'm doing with our guidelines to raise funds, okay? And that would go with anyone.
Here's my card.
I think you may need a card another time. Thank you. So, yes, this is very important to us. And I'm embarrassed sometimes. The other day, the sink fell, you know, we've had issues. We've had issues in the library, and we need renovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle, very much. Thank you very much for your presentation. And if there are no more questions from the board, thank you very much. Super, thank you very much. I know it was last second there for us, but... Next on the agenda, Mr. Brennan, construction manager update, please. Now Rachel's going to book out of here, huh? Okay.
Nice, nice pun. Took the audience a while.
Mr. Connolly, that was awesome.
He wants that room named after him for sure.
Yes, he does.
Thank you, good evening. There are no change orders for approval this month. The contingency is still remaining at a 37% exposure, as it was last month and the month before, so everything's remaining the same for any change orders or issues, as far as that goes. Regarding the building itself, at the last meeting, I reported, the first floor will be turned over, which is the police station, that'll be turned over the first week of September. The remainder of the building will be the first week of December. The current schedule still remains the same. We've been impacted a little bit by the rain, but we've still been able to get work done inside, so that's why we're not completely veneered and finished with windows and everything, because the walls have to dry out in order to be waterproofed. But the roof is on now, so it's not raining inside the building. The utilities itself, on the first floor, conduit is about 90% overhead roughed in, ductwork is about 75% as well as piping, plumbing, and sprinkler. And on the second floor, they're also starting roughens up there, as well as constructing metal stud walls. Next step will be paint, and then ceilings and finishes will roll pretty quickly.
Okay. How are we doing with the schedule now? Everything is...
Everything's back to that time that he asked for originally, for items that he impacted, you know, early on, 72 days. Those, that still remains the same. We're still right at that date of the first week of September, first week of December.
Okay, so we cut down those other ones, we took back those other dates, okay. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Brennan, thank you very much, greatly appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have a PowerPoint presentation by the Historical Commission annual report, and Stacy Madd, nope, okay, you're good. Thank you very much for coming up.
Susanna Baruko. What's that?
Thank you very much for coming up.
I was just announcing you.
By the time Tim Denny gets up here, he's going to be a wreck. How about a field? How about a field?
Connolly Field.
Good, Connolly Field.
Connolly.
She didn't.
We have a public meeting at Sunday library, if you need a library, Jacob.
There's worse things than a library.
This is true.
Ma'am, where's yours?
Thank you. So I'm Susanna Baruko, and I'm the vice chair of the Haverford Township Historical Commission. Although I'm presenting, Stacy Maddox, the chair of the commission, is also here, so she and I can answer questions at the end, if you have any. So I'm presenting annual reports for 2013 through 2015, and 2016 coming soon. We're a little behind, but catching up quick. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
How is this?
Oh, there you go. That's a radio show.
I'll stand really close.
See? There we go. So a summary of our accomplishments and an outline for our presentation of the Certified Local Government Program. I'll run through just some highlights of project reviews, a brief update on the Historic Resource Survey, and on our efforts at community outreach. So the Certified Local Government, this is a program of the National Park Service administered by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, State Historic Preservation Office. The township became a CLG in March of 2015, and that was through an application submitted by the Haverford Township Historical Commission, where the second CLG in Delaware County, I think the first was Ridley Park, and the 45th CLG in Pennsylvania. Some of the benefits of being a CLG include access to 50/50 matching grants for preservation initiatives and programs, professional resources and technical assistance. There's a community resource person, Corey Higginies, here in the east, who is available to us for technical assistance, and we've used him on several occasions. And basically, when you're a CLG, you get somewhat preferential treatment if you have issues that you want to bring to the State Historic Preservation Office, so it's a nice thing. They also offer CLGs scholarship funds for attendance at educational workshops, for travel, and the cost of workshops, and that's something that we're working on making better use of. Oops. Sorry about that. Project review. So what you see here is just a summary of the number of projects we've reviewed over the 2013, 2014, and 2015, and just some statistics on what we did. And what you see, the images around, on the right, that was a project where we consulted with the owner on the design of a new porch that you see in the photograph below it. In the right corner, that was a property that we looked at, that was a historic kennel, and we conferred with the property owner about preservation, and also with an interested buyer. And then the two photographs at the bottom left, it's a little hard to see, on the left, you can see it's an open porch, and on the right, it's just, was a proposal to enclose the porch, and we worked with the homeowner on doing that. So just some highlights. One of our favorite applicants is the Marion Golf Club. They've been really great collaborators with us. This was a proposal to add a pavilion on the side of their building, and you'll see in the circle there that they had outdoor activities under a tent and under an open porch essentially. So we worked with them on the design of an addition to have an interior pavilion, and what's circled there on the right is the, is what they built, which we thought was really an outstanding, an outstanding project, a great example of what can be done in the township. We have done, worked with them on a couple of other projects, which you'll see the next time I'm up here. St. Andrews United Methodist Church in Haverford. This was built in the Lanark neighborhood. It was built for the Lanark neighborhood, which was the Lanark, as everybody must know, I hope, was the first designed community here in the township. This church was built for that, for that community. It's been rehabilitated and adaptively reused as a residence, so we worked with the owner. Some commissioners may remember that we were here representing the, an issue about the roof at the time, but the project is, at least on the exterior, we haven't been invited inside.
I've been inside, it's beautiful.
Does it look good?
Oh, it's beautiful.
Oh, yeah, that's good to hear.
Spent a lot of money in that place.
Thank you. So this is the exterior with the new roof. They did some work on the windows and the masonry, and it's a real, great example, excuse me, of adaptive reuse of a historic religious property here in the township. The Lanark School, again, in Lanark, this was built for the Lanark community. This building, we reviewed an ADA ramp between 2013 and 2015 for a firm, I'm forgetting the name because I'm not even looking at my notes, it doesn't matter, but that, the firm that was going to take it over never did anything with the property, so it was purchased by a developer. It's been put on the National Register of Historic Places, it was listed this year, and that's going to be turned, from what we know, into apartments, using the 20% federal historic rehabilitation tax credit, which is a 20% federal credit for rehabilitation costs on buildings that are listed in or eligible for listing in the National Register.
And that means that it'll never be torn down, so it'll be preserved?
No. National Register listing is honorary, and it holds no, it holds no requirement. Any, any, the only thing that is saving this particular building and any of the buildings in the township for demolition is our ordinance. The National Register is a completely honorary listing. Although I should say, once you engage with the federal historic rehabilitation tax credit program, you have to hold the property for five years, so at least saves it for five.
Doesn't there have to be things inside the building?
Interior, exterior and landscape is all reviewed.
Right, so he's got to put it back to where it was.
Yeah, yeah, the whole, the whole site is reviewed for that program. But this is, I think, another, another great adaptive reuse for the township. The Mainlight Arts Center in Haverford, we reviewed on the right, top right, these are a little hard to see, I'm sorry. They, we reviewed an addition, which you actually see on the bottom left, the images on the right are before, at the top, and after on the bottom. And as part of that new addition, they also did some rehabilitation work in the basement and added the windows that you see on the top left. So that was a project that we reviewed and approved. And the Grange, we've met with the Grange a number of times over the years. Sometimes they come in just with preliminary plans that we talk about, and then they come back with their final design, so this is a, oh gosh, what did they call it, Stacy? The amphitheater, thank you. I'm so glad I spent so many hours on my notes today. So this is an amphitheater that they built, and we worked with them on the design of the amphitheater, also the restoration of the masonry walls behind it, and an ADA ramp so that people with disabilities would have access to the, to the lawn area to enjoy the programs in the amphitheater. This was one of, well, certainly one of my favorite projects, and one of the most interesting, I don't know if any of you read about it, we wrote a short article for the Board of Commissioners newsletter. So the owners of 1509 Ashton Road came to the Historical Commission, and they were proposing to replace some windows at the back of the building, but the big thing was they wanted to replace all of the siding. And it's hard to see in this photograph, but the siding is aluminum siding. And we knew that it was a Sears &amp; Roebuck kit house, and you can see the page from the kit house, it was the crescent design. You can see the page from the Sears &amp; Roebuck catalog on the right of the screen. And basically, you bought the kit of parts, and it was delivered to your site, and either you or your contractor built it. And we have several here in the township. So we knew that it had aluminum siding on it, and we suggested to the owner, you know, have you looked under the siding, because maybe the original siding is still there, because that's frequently what happens. And low and behold, they agreed with us and decided to look, and they found it. And you see that at the top right, and that is the original siding, which was found in really near perfect condition, and you can see in the image directly below is a close-up of that very thin clambered siding, so the original siding. So the image on the left looks much like the previous image, and really, that's a lot of what preservation is about. Hopefully, restoration shows that you can keep the integrity of a building while doing what you need to do. So this was a great project. 3018 Darby Road, this is an 1840 federal house, and it was purchased by a family. We reviewed the exterior restoration and changes to some, but not all, windows. There's also, you can't see in this image, there was an old barn that was on the site. They had a structural engineer look at it and determined that it was structurally failing, so we allowed demolition to go ahead, and they built a new barn in its stead. And the building now is really a lot more visible on Darby Road, which is nice, and the barn, garage, former barn, is there on the right. So that's the end of the... So, that's the end of the highlights. The Historic Resource Survey list, we've tried to make it easier to search, so that people can access it more easily, so we've gone through it and organized it by address, so that you can look for it on, by address, rather than going through page by page, which is what you had to do before, that's now on the township website. We worked on a Historic Resource Survey nomination short form for people who might be interested in having their building listed, and we've engaged with the Delaware County Planning Department to assist with training to complete new survey forms, which is something that we've been working on. I wanted to bring this one up, this was an unusual situation, and I will refer to my notes here briefly. Many of you may know about this issue, 101 Tendy Road, in, again, in the Lanark, Lanark neighborhood, a couple of neighbors got together and submitted a nomination for the property to be listed in the Historic Resource Survey, in an effort to block demolition. So, we received the nomination, reviewed it according to the ordinance, and approved it, but, and in response to residents' concerns, the commission hosted Corey Kegreis of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, and Jill Hall, Preservation Planner for the Delaware County Planning Department, at one of our regularly scheduled meetings, that's the photograph bottom left, to talk about conservation districts. We have an anti-demolition ordinance, but there are many other regulatory tools for preserving community character that are available, and conservation districts are one of them. Unfortunately, the commission, the Haverford Township Historical Commission approved the nomination, but it was not soon enough, and this issue went to court, a judge ruled against the Lanark residents, and the building was demolished. It's really unfortunate, it was built in 1905, it was one of, the first of 106 architect-designed residential buildings that were constructed in the Lanark community. It was also significant as the home of Dr. Walter Callenbach, founder of the National Society for the Advancement of the Blind. So, an important historic resource that is unfortunately no longer standing. And finally, community outreach, excuse me, I think since, for the last, I think since 2013, I think, we've been writing, members of the commission have been writing articles that are included in the Board of Commissioners newsletters, said there was an article on the Sears &amp; Roebuck catalog houses, we did one on financial incentives for historic preservation, just introducing the Historical Commission to the community and so forth, and will continue to do that. As a group, we're increasing our attendance at local conferences, a number of us attended the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions Forum in 2014, it's an organization that we are a member of. As Chair of the State Historic Preservation Board, I'll be attending the statewide preservation conference next week. Every year since 2009, we've engaged with residents at the Heritage Festival, which I have to say is really always a highlight. There's clearly pride among those in the township who own older homes, and people come up to our booth and ask if their house is historic, and they know what year it was built, and sometimes they know something about the history of it, and even though they may not meet the ordinance's criteria for addition to the survey, there is clearly a love for, for the historic houses here in the township. There were also several questions this year about historic resources in people's neighborhood, which we're taking, I hope, with some optimism perhaps, as an indication to us that we're getting the word out, and that people are aware of historic resources in the township. And that concludes my remarks, thank you. If you have any questions, Stacy or I'd be happy to address them.
Does anybody have any questions, Mary?
Nope, I have no questions.
Thank you very much for your report.
My pleasure. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Suzanne, thank you very much, greatly appreciate, great presentation. Stacy, thank you very much, yep, absolutely. Next on the agenda, I know that the Park Board has employees here, and what, has staff members here, and thank you very much for, as well as the board. So, Mr. Denny, you're up, sir.
He got a haircut for tonight.
A haircut.
And he passed the podium.
He's a little nervous.
He's not used to public speaking.
No, no.
Nervous in front of crowds?
He gets a little nervous.
Good evening, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here. Appreciate it. Before I get started, I do want to mention, Jimmy just brought this to my attention, that next week, Wilbur Clavon, who was on the Park Board for many, many years, is going to be honored at the Commissioners' Meeting, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I also wanted to mention, I have with us here tonight is some members of the current Park Board, Michelle Albera is here, you know, I saw Jeanette come in, there she is back in the corner, the Chairman of the Board, Dave McGardell, and Bill Gormley are all here from the Park Board, so thanks a lot for coming out. I also have with me tonight, handsome crew, this gentleman, good-looking guy in the red shirt, is Jason O'Brien, he's Head of Park Maintenance. Next to him is Eileen Matawa, Eileen is our Facilities Coordinator. Next to Eileen is Brian Barrett, you probably know, the Assistant Director, and next to Brian is Larry Woods, who is our Operations Supervisor at the Creck. And I asked them to come out tonight, just so you would get a sense of some of our senior members and the breadth of the department. Back in September, I think it was, Larry and I were talking about different things, and he had suggested to me at the time that it might be a good time to bring to the Commissioners' attention some of the ongoing issues with finances or upgrades needed at our township's parks. I say we have 33 parks, and the reason I put it like that is, you can sort of quibble a little bit of whether McDonald Field is a park in itself, Mary Place Park itself, they're really part of the Darby Creek Valley Park officially, but I always say 33 parks. And I don't have to tell the Commissioners, you know, as well as I do, the value of the parks to our township, because I'm sure you hear about it, probably just as much as I hear about it, and I think, from my experience anyway, from my 35 years, I believe almost all, if not all, the civic associations in the township have grown up around their local parks. Local parks are a huge part of what makes Haverford Township such a great place to live. Parks are made up of, when I say six different components, playgrounds, ball fields, your courts, your tennis courts, your basketball courts, your infrastructure, which is things like your fencing, your pathways, your lights, your parking areas, your trashcans, and then all the trees and shrubs, and then your buildings, either pavilions, shacks, bathrooms, sheds. So, there's really six major components or areas of parks, and what I'm hoping to do tonight is give you an overview of the condition of some of them, and some recommendations that we're making. Parks, for the most part, are a little bit like the library, maybe a little bit like some of the beautification programs that you see on our medians, in that parks are different than some of the township-sponsored things or financed things, in that the residents get involved in the use of them. And so, the residents also often are involved in raising money for them. You don't see the residents out raising money for a new trash truck or a new police car, and you don't see them driving them. But our parks, our fields, our playgrounds, are very much resident-involved. And there's kind of a plus-minus to that, is, the plus is, it shows the value that our residents put on our parks, and it certainly creates a sense of ownership regarding our parks. The downside, perhaps, is, it could become sort of a time of question after 20 years go by, well, we put this in, in honor of Larry Holmes, Larry Holmes has moved on, it now needs to be replaced, who's going to pay for it? That happens. The other side of it is, it can happen.
Don't give them the wrong idea about me moving on, all right?
We're starting.
I don't want anybody to even fantasize about that, all right, especially Jimmy here, all right?
The other part of it is, sometimes it can lead to a sense of complacency, that with all these groups raising money, you know, that these are township facilities, and the township doesn't allocate funds in our operational budget to pay for these, and it's nobody's fault, but it happens, and it's kind of a history in our township somewhat. So, with that, I'm going to hopefully show you a video, and, oops, sorry, to get us This is just a two-minute video, it's called "The World Needs Play," and I think it's probably pretty appropriate for this presentation, and perhaps the times we live in. Mary told me this will work, so this, oops.
When I was a kid, I'd come home from school, put my after-school jeans on.
Can you hear that, or no?
Get on my bike, and my mom would say, be home by dinner.
Okay, well, you know what?
I'd be out there, I knew what I was doing, and where I was.
There are a lot of societal factors in America that devalue children's play.
As adults, we've gotten away from a certain amount of play, playfulness itself.
You know, when we used to go out and play, a lot of people aren't comfortable allowing their children.
Just going to move past it, basically what it's saying is, times have changed, as we all know, maybe not Kevin, because he's too young, but for those of us who are a little further along, times have really changed. When we were young, there's a lot of unstructured play, you went outside, you left in the morning, you came home at night, especially in the summertime, you just played. These days, kids are inside much more, they spend 90% of their time inside, and when they're outside, it's often structured play. The whole concept of unstructured play, you know, Fred Rogers said, "Play is the work of childhood," and unstructured play is so key to that, and that's, that we're kind of losing that in our society, and playgrounds are sort of one of the last bastions of that. So, that's what this is about, and it speaks to a lot of truth. Hopefully, I'll move on. All right, I'll walk you through it. See what I mean?
Awesome.
There it is, there's presentation.
Now, the fact is, I mean, a sign of the times, any kid under the age of 12 could have gotten that to work, okay? Yeah, they can't fix a flat tire, but they could have gotten that to work, right?
Right, they don't know how to play, but they know how to do this. Anyway, this is a long-term view of things, and so I'm saying, it's a generational view of things. In my discussions with Larry, we decided, rather than focus on one thing, let's look down the road, you know, looks, long approach, some of the things that you're going to see are really issues that go back 30, 40, 50 years, and this is to try and take a look at that and see. As the Board knows, congratulations to, to the Commissioners, as well as Larry, and my own team that we were, named the Top Agency of the Year, State of Pennsylvania, last year, first time they've given out that kind of an award. And that award was really based on the impact in the community the last five years, all the good stuff that's happened in Haverford Township in the last five years, the trails, the Creck, the reserve, the pavilions at the playgrounds, the bathrooms, the rain gardens, all great stuff. This, the importance of parks, you see that, 33 parks, investing in our parks, investment in our future, and Americans support increased spending for local parks and recreation, three to one. Parks improve our economy, increase our property values, connect us to nature, strengthen the community, and enhance our health, and study after study after study shows that, and the direct connection between the park and recreation facilities in a township, and your crime level, and all sorts of things. I'll show you something at the very end that's pretty, pretty impressive. There's a brief history of the park funding. This Board of Commissioners approved the capital bond in 2012 for a million dollars, a lot of great stuff happened from that, which I'll show you in a minute. That was the first time that the township has ever done a bond in Haverford Township's history for park improvements like that. Prior to that, we got grants, private and public, could use HUD funds in certain areas that were designated by HUD, we used Neighborhood Park Improvement Funds. The biggest allocation there was when the Quadrangle was developed in 1989, and they had to put aside a certain amount of money per unit developed, so that was big. What I call budget settling, Tom Banner, some of you knew Tom, was very good at this, you know, when Commissioner came along, if he had enough votes and said, "I want something new at my park," then Tom would figure out, he was very good, and mastered figuring out how to make it happen.
He knew how to count to five, also.
Yeah, he knew how to count to five, yeah, he'd always say to me, "Tim, you have five votes?" So, which I guess we'll find out. But civic groups and user groups were also a big part of, over the course of the years.
We've only named three Commissioners so far, so you better.
That's right, you'll all be mentioned, the Connell Room, the Holmes Room. So, the highlights of the capital plan in 2012, as some of you know, most of you all probably know, the pavilions, extremely popular, people love them, bathrooms at Paddock and Merwood, parking at Steelfield, basketball courts at Grassland, Westgate, Bailey, and Chatham, the new pickleball courts at Paddock, if you get a chance, stop over and see them, they just opened this weekend, people love them, the skate park that is pending, and then solar lights at the dog park, the Darby Creek Trail, Freedom Playground. So, a lot of really good stuff to happen in the capital plan in 2012, and again, I commend the Board, all new stuff, as you see, and so, there's benefits to the pavilions, people love them, just love them. There's bathroom being lowered, that was a project and a half, that's at Merwood, new basketball courts at Elwell and Grassland, and these are some improvements that have happened with other funding, the water line, and field improvements at Polo, Preston, and Elwell, that we used the US Open funds, playground equipment at Elwell, we got HUD funds, and the Darby Creek Trail, and the Penzi Trail, working with Lori and Pinotti, DVR-PC grants paid for them, and of course, they are extremely popular also. This is a list of facilities, and the reason I did this, I know you can't read it, I have a handout for you that I'll give you later, it's just, it's on our township map, and it shows all the different things that are at the different facilities, and again, I just put it out there to show you, there's a lot, there's really a lot, there's a lot of parks, we don't have an extraordinary large amount of park land, we're about right where we should be for our resident population, but what we do have is a lot of parks, because they've grown up locally. We have a lot of small, local parks, and, and there are a lot of work, and just refer to the map, one of the things that Wagner, you know, does this map for us, because he's in real estate, and he knows what people are looking for in terms of real estate. We hear over and over again, parks and recreation, same with our Have a Good Times, you'll see the realtors that advertise on the back of that, and we charge them a good penny, but they feel it's worth it, because they know that's what people are looking for. A summary of what you just saw, 45 ball fields, 23 playgrounds, 19 tennis courts, 18 basketball courts, eight pickleball courts, two volleyball, hockey, 10 restrooms, building, skate park, dog park, three miles of paved trails, seven miles of unpaved, and 13 nature areas, a lot of stuff. This is to try and show the areas that the previous bond did not address, previous bond did not address, and you'll see them, they're there. The thing that I want to kind of point out is that the things that we are pointing out are not urgencies, they're not, you know, if something isn't done tomorrow, the sky's going to fall in, it's not that, it's kind of like your house, when, I lease my house, where my wife is constantly saying, you know, "This needs to be done, this needs to be done." It's not like the roof's falling in, but it's also getting old, and it's not going to get better, and the longer it goes, it's going to cost more. So, most of these things are those type of things, you know, where we're saying it's not urgent, it's certainly not a knock on Jason and his crew, they do a great job, but I am recommending that we invest some serious money. Again, some of our playgrounds are easily 30 years old, some of them even more, and it's just time to upgrade them. I put that in there, safety surfacing, those aren't just wood chips, you see that, we actually pay for those. It's called wood carpeting, and it's a fibrous wood, and, and we have to pay for it, and it costs money, and, and really, it's a constant, and we should be doing more of it. ADA pathways, this is Hilltop at the new pavilion. A lot of our parks, we should be putting in ADA pathways when we make these improvements to the park, we need to put in ADA pathways. This is an example of Lanark Park. You can't get in the other way anymore, and this is what it is at the other end. And it needs some work. The park needs some work, but specifically, there's, that is not ADA compliant, as Mario knows, yeah.
Yes, I know, we're working on it.
Playground I used to go to as a kid, and that sign there says, "No dogs permitted in park," ordinance 1806, that ordinance doesn't exist anymore. So a lot of things need to be upgraded. Some court surfaces, that's at Hilltop. This is tennis courts at the Grange, tennis courts at Westgate. Amenities, I put that, you see on the left, over the years, again, it's not an urgency, but we've always gotten our trash cans, those barrels. Again, afraid, it's hard to beat the price, but they don't look too nice, they tend to get knocked over. When they get knocked over, then you get trash, when you get trash, it slows down our guys, Jason's guys, cleaning up the parks. So it's not just an aesthetic, but it truly is a money, because time is money. And I'm suggesting we get permanent trash cans, but they come with a cost. Signage, there's a new sign at Grassland Park, there's an old sign in Normandy Park. Again, nobody's fault, it's just, you know, if we want to make them look better, if we want to present them better, it's going to cost some money. Fencing, we have a lot of fencing at our parks. Jason, I asked Jason to give me some numbers, and we have about 10,000 feet of fencing, I believe it was. You see that fence there, it's kind of rusty, it's not necessarily dangerous, although you see it sticking out the bottom. At some point, you can only fix it so much, you've got to put the money into, there's more fencing, there's the new pickleball courts on your left, you see all that fencing just around those tennis courts, it's probably a $20,000 to $30,000 job, and you see how rusty that fencing is. Another piece of fencing there at Hilltop. Trees, I put in trees because Haverford Township's parks have thousands of trees. Trees are work, and trees should be viewed comprehensively. You know, we need to really consider where we're placing trees. I'm suggesting we have an inventory, have somebody come in and look at our trees. We've lost playground equipment as, as branches come crashing down on playground equipment. We've got a lot of great trees, but they just, over the years, have kind of come happen and span. It's invasive species. Number of our parks have invasive species. Now that we have trails, we have invasive species. You know, we, I've talked to a number of experts about what we need to do, and you can do it, but you got to invest the money and the time, and it's year after year, see to get rid of them. Pathways, this is Merwood, see, that's an old pathway, I think we have about 10,000 feet of existing pathways in our parks. And as you see, it's not going to get any better. It's going to cost more the longer we wait to do something about it. I wonder what that is? That's a headache. That's Paddock Field. And what I'm trying to show there is regrading our fields. And this is an old thing that we worked with Chuck Faulkner from Pinoni when we were looking at Paddock, and I wanted to focus on this for a few reasons. One is, we're looking at possible reconfiguration, but we're also looking at regrading, and we're also looking at stormwater issues. In the end, you see a couple of those arrows are pointing to where we're looking at, we could put in rain gardens. In the end, we did not do the reconfiguration, we didn't do any of it, but it's needed, and you'll see that in my, my list of recommendations, Hilltop, Paddock, veterans, especially with our current situation, Westgate, and I forget what's the fifth one, the Grange. Those are the five fields that we're recommending that we take a look at. And as I said, this is no knock on Jason. There's Grange Field from four years ago when we were putting in the pavilion, that's an overhead shot, and you see what it looks like today, so he's done a great job. But that's not regrading, that's, that's his year-round maintenance program has really brought the grass back. There's Merwood Field, how it looked a few years ago and how it looks now. There's Hilltop, Little League Field, and how it looked a few years ago. So Jason and his guys are doing a great job, but some of these fields, especially our major fields, have issues that are bigger than Jason's group. And I just put this in, this, you know, things change. We have a lot of tennis courts in Haverford Township, because they were probably big in the '70s. A lot of them are in a state of disrepair, and I'm recommending some of them not be repaired, because we don't need all of them. We also have a number of courts, Guest Track, Paddock Park, Bailey Park, at the fourth one, where it's just black, blacktop area. Maybe we could do something like a little kids', Richland, you know, it's just blacktop area, and we can either tear them out or think of something creative to do with them, like a little kids' bicycle driving spotter. There's different things we can do, but we should take a look at it. And Westgate Park, as Steve knows, I've recommended fixing up two of the courts, but the other two, either take them out for stormwater issues or come up with something else to do. The park board came with me two weeks ago on a park tour, and it was greater than it came out, and I was showing them all these things at the different parks. And to give them examples of this is what I'm talking about, and that night, there was some little girls riding their scooters around on the tennis courts, the other two tennis courts at Westgate. Well, that's okay, you know, maybe that's it too, you know. Sometimes you'll see at Bailey Park, you'll see mothers of little children riding their little tricycles around on that. So, but there's a lot of them around town. Other things to consider is the additional cost of maintenance. We have 10 miles of trails that we did not have seven, eight years ago. Our synthetic turf is entering its ninth year, so we've done great, but in a few years, we're going to have to look at replacement. And the crack, you know, it's five years old this month, another five years or so. So you're going to start looking at replacement of something there, it's guaranteed, it's nature of building. So I'm just putting it out that there's things, there's the turf in 2009 when we opened, there's Community Recreation Environmental Center, Haverford State, great project. And Larry's here, and he can attest that the crack is extremely popular, especially popular with people over the age of 55. And as that says, there's more people over the age of 55 registered users than there are students in Haverford High School. That's an amazing number. It just shows you two things, pickleball and walking have really, really taken hold. So we're proud, we have a healthier community, and again, I give kudos to the board. It's been financially successful. Eileen handles all the rentals, we have over 200 rentals a year, people love it. General recommendations. One of my recommendations is, I know we're getting involved with a comprehensive plan, and the work that we've done with trails, especially, that we included an official map. And what an official map is, an official map shows, here's the township. If this piece of property became available for sale, the township would get first shot at buying it. It's not eminent donating, it's just identifying things in town. And right now, we're working on, working with Dave on the Darby Creek Trail study. There's a house down on Vermont Road, sure Bill knows it, some of you know it. Boy, it'd be nice if we owned that. That was up for sale a couple of years ago, was up for sale before that, about 20 years earlier. It's the one house there that we can't get around on the trail. So that's what an official map does, perhaps even Marlene's property, you know, things that are by parks or would connect things, that they're just on a map, and it's not eminent donating, it just means the township gives first right at buying them. Again, I'm recommending we continue with our rain garden program. I think it shows that parks are, have evolved, they're not just active recreation anymore, but they can be real assets in trying to mitigate stormwater issues around town. And they also serve a purpose of, if Jason's guys don't have to cut the grass in that area, so we're not only helping save time and money and pollution, but we're helping with stormwater. So I think we continue with that. As I said, I strongly recommend a comprehensive approach to the trees. It's a big job, maybe even bringing in an outside professional to look at all the trees in town and say, over the course of the next 10 years, here's what you should be doing in terms of our trees. And I'm saying that, stay up to park maintenance to consider that, we're still not up to where we were two years ago when a couple of our guys got hurt, and Jason's crew has taken on a lot of new work with the trails and all, and so I'm recommending that. Changes to the ordinance, I'm, I'm putting these out there, and, and Bill and I were talking a little bit earlier, you know, maybe, maybe smoking is something that also should go in here. But one of the things is dogs in parks, dogs in parks. It's an ongoing issue. Right now, our ordinance is extremely confusing. Somehow, when it got amended in 1996, I think it was, Lori, and the, the way it reads, it was supposed to be, the commissioner, the fourth ward at the time, had recommended, Polo Field, you could walk dogs around the perimeter on a leash. That's pretty much all the ordinance says now. And it used to say you can't have dogs in parks, but at Polo Field, you could walk them around the perimeter on the leash. So it's very confusing to the users, so it's hard for our animal warden when he's trying to enforce it. The other thing that's happened is, times have changed. You know, I've been at a number of events where commissioners brought their dog. I've been at a number of events where police are there with their dog, and I'm not talking about canine, I'm just, you know. People have, have gotten used to the idea of dogs, people, much more so than 20, 30 years ago, clean up after their dogs. Dogs can be a controversial topic, but I think right now, we have signs in our parks, "No dogs allowed in your park," "You must clean up after your dog." There's a lot of confusion out there, and nobody's going to call the police and say, "Hey, Joe, I just saw a dog at Grange Field." I don't think it's going to happen. So I think we really need to come to grips with, you know, what are we doing with dogs in our parks? Because right now, it's just, you know, there's no relevancy to the relationship, what's in the code, what's happening in our parks, and how, and I do think times have changed. The other thing that's business, our code says, "No business advertising in our parks." You know, you go around to a lot of our parks, there's business advertising all around, and those kind of things make it tough to be consistent. You know, in our role, in Jason's role, in Eileen's role, it's tough to be consistent when what's happening out there doesn't jive with, with, with what's there. Whoever follows me is going to have to figure, you know, I think it would be, we'd be doing him or her a favor by 20, 30 years from now, here's our policy, let's make it consistent. Again, I'm recommending continuing with the rain gardens and stormwater control, the dogs. This is what I want to get to, the estimated cost next three to five years. If I get this to work, I'm impressed. So you see the list there, and there's the three I have in red, I wanted you to see them specifically because I put playgrounds, we have 23 playgrounds, if we spend $50,000 at each playground, it's around $1.2 million. However, as I'll show you in a second, I asked a rep, met with Jason and I at Grange Playground, and I'll show you this in a minute. We could easily spend $100,000 at Grange Playground. I just met with people, Merwood Civic, and we did just a few pieces of Merwood, that's $30,000. As Andy knows, same thing at Polo, you know, I had talked to Larry and said, "Can I tell them $30,000 to kind of get us started?" So the, these are real numbers, but as I said to the park board, they're not hard details numbers, because you could spend $30,000, or you could spend $100,000, or you could spend $120,000, depending on what we choose to do. But I think $50,000 is, is a solid number. If we're going to upgrade our equipment and make it all compliant, then that's a real number. Fencing, you see that, I have 100 feet, equals roughly 3,000 feet. I have a range of number, because our fencing goes from six feet to eight feet to four feet. If around our tennis courts, it's 10 feet, so it's not one, one solid number. Again, if we did, did that townshipwide, we'd save money just through bulk, you know, it's just a way to save money, if you look at it all. Is any of it urgent? No, but it's not going to get any easier, it's not going to get better. The other thing, you see other pathways and old courts, which I had just referred to before, the township has roughly 10,000 feet of sidewalk at our parks, the township has roughly 10,000 feet of pathways in our parks, at Westgate, at Merwood, at Paddock, at Polo, at Preston, you know, you name it, at Grange, where you, Normandy, you know, on and on and on, all of our parks have some kind of pathways, and Chatham Glen, usual, as you know, you know. So it's a lot, it's a lot of blacktop, and it's not going to get any better, and it needs to be, to be looked at. So that's why you see that number is quite a range. And at the bottom, I put capital replacement, that's nothing specific up at the crack, but I'm just saying by that time, it, you know, it'll be 10 years old. And Freedom Playground, the same thing, that was put in in 2010, I was up there today with a playground rep, looking at the safety surfacing. As you remember, the township invested $150,000 in Freedom Playground, and at some point, we're going to have to redo that safety surfacing, probably in the next three to four years. So I listed them what I call the strategic order of priority. Again, safety issues at the playground are the only thing I would put under, we should take a look at these right away, ADA pathways, right away. The other things, I'm recommending all of them, they're all going to, you know, need to be done at some point, and so that's why I included them. And regrading the ball fields, I have Eileen with me here, and I put veterans in 2017, and Lori had worked with Angelo Capuzzi for sort of a basic reconfiguring, but I'm suggesting maybe we do even more, you know, take a look at it. Eileen and I had met with the user groups, Sacred Heart, Brookline, and one of the things you, I put in there about changes and trends, things that were popular 30, 40 years ago, you never had lacrosse being played. You know, now you have soccer year-round. You have, apparently, they're not playing as much 90-foot baseball as 70-foot baseball. So things change, and it may be to everyone's benefit, and this would be a major coordination effort on Eileen's part, our fields are packed, but we had somebody come to the park board meeting, right, and assure us, Jeff Stagewald, that he could get all the groups to work together, because if we shut down a Hilltop, or shut down a Westgate, or Veterans, or Paddock, that means the other groups have to cooperate with us. It's a little bit like the UN, you know, trying to get them to work together, but that's a big thing. This is what I said, see this part of Grange Playground, those pieces right there, see how they're separated? They have safety surfacing, they should have more. Some of the slides are a little bit high, you know, just, again, because of the grading of the field, things have happened. We looked at, could we go back and retrofit? It's a lot of money, you still have old equipment. Or something like this, where you put them all together, you get new equipment, put all the safety surfacing together, so then you are covered, but you could easily spend $90,000 to $100,000 just on that. And I want to show that. Couple of things I'll leave you with is a study done by Penn State, showing that park use not only influences your health, but also how healthy you feel. And this one is the one I referred to earlier, this is a pretty fascinating thing and worth reading. In Iceland, around the year 2000, 2001, they had some real issues with drug abuse and alcohol issues in Iceland, and they went on a real, real program, the government, to really push activities, facilities, recreation, after-school, a lot of stuff, and the results are really, really impressive. So I want you to see that. There it is, Parks Office for everyone, with our township manager helping us out in the back there.
That's a pretend run.
Down, I'm going to give you a little pin that says, "The world needs play." There you go. Happy to answer questions.
Excellent presentation. And are there any questions from the board?
I have, I have one, actually.
Yep. Commissioner?
So, Tim, do you know specifically by park, which pieces of playground equipment you would consider to be unsafe, and that you would actually take out tomorrow, if you, if you could? Even though we don't, we wouldn't necessarily have a replacement?
Jason did an in-depth report, which I do have here.
And are there any questions from the board?
I have, I have one, actually.
Yep. Commissioner?
So, Tim, do you know specifically by park, which pieces of playground equipment you would consider to be unsafe, and that you would actually take out tomorrow, if you, if you could? Even though we wouldn't necessarily have a replacement?
Jason did an in-depth report, which I do have here.
Can we publish that to the plaintiff's bar right now?
But we could take, you know, I do have this. So, yeah, we could, we could take a look.
You have to take it out, right?
And again, I don't want to overstate it, it's not like we're breaking any laws or rules, but we just view it as this piece should come out, yeah.
You know which piece it is, okay?
Yes.
And I guess the other question I had is, just having been up at the Polo Field this past Saturday with a group of neighbors and reviewing the playground situation up there, I mean, the 35,000 or 50,000 doesn't really get you much. And I'm just wondering if the number that you have given us is light. And I know some parks, in terms of the playgrounds, are much better than others. So maybe we don't have to spend, spend as much in some parks. But Polo is, is huge, and that playground hasn't been touched in 50 years. How long, 50, probably, I bet 40, 50 years?
Well, a couple of, some of the pieces were, we did something in 2000, it actually was under Public Works. Again, a lot of this has only been under my department for a few years, and park maintenance is under our department. But I think it was in 2000, they took out all the pieces that had lead paint and allocated 10,000 per park for a new piece. So it was not total, but it was something. But some of them go back certainly 20, 30, 40 years. And to answer your question, Andy, that's why I gave you that number, 1.2 million up to 2 million, just for playgrounds alone, it could go higher even. But, and I use 50,000 as an average. But, but certainly at some parks, you could easily spend 100,000 dollars, no doubt about it.
Well, the swing, the swing sets behind Lanark School are the same swing sets that I went on as a kid.
I went on, probably.
Yeah, exactly. So they are, yeah. Bill's in the audience saying, yep, me too.
No, yeah, but to answer your question, yes.
They still work?
The only thing I would suggest is that if we do, if we have unsafe playground equipment, I would suggest that we get it out as soon as possible, even though we might not have a replacement. It's better to have nothing than something that's unsafe, in my mind.
Yeah. And Jason and I have talked about that. It's, again, I don't think we have anything that I would call, you know, dangerous, but things that are not up to where we'd like to see them.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Last thought, for anybody's interest, we're going to have a trail meeting tomorrow night. I'll be there up at the Crec at 7 o'clock to show we have a feasibility grant going with Darby Creek Trail. And I'll, we'll be presenting where we are in that study at 7:00 PM at the Crec tomorrow night.
Tim, yeah, just, just as a comment, one, thank you very much for the presentation, and I thought it was very informative. But when you look at it, and you look at that number of the playground equipment, and this is more, might just be a commentary for this board, but I think one of the things we're faced with now is that the fact that there hasn't been funds allocated for replacement of this playground equipment for many years. And something, you know, regardless of what we do with this capital investment at this time, we, we should consider moving forward, having that be a specific allocation in the budget as an annual thing, in terms of a little bit at one time, so it's not a giant chunk.
Catch up.
Yeah. I mean, we're essentially where we're, we're being presented with an issue where we have 23 parks that all need new playground equipment, rather something where we're, we're proactively dealing with it each year. Because I think what Tim's presentation sort of highlighted is the fact that it's, it's really an investment in our community, as much as, you know, paving our roads, or our sewer system, or anything we do with the Economic Development Committee. I mean, it, it's really something that shows upon Haverford Township as to why people want to live here. So it's something that we shouldn't just address every 10 to 15 years, it's something we should address on an, on an annual basis, albeit on a much smaller scale. But, and to be clear, I am saying that after we, we sort of addressed Tim's presentation, but I think it's something we should consider.
It's worth noting, compare that, $3.5 million for, you know, to do everything they want in the parks, for the most part, everything they want to do has at least a 10-year life. Now, you compare it to do one mile of roads, which is probably about $3.5 million. That's the value we get for the work we do in these parks. You spread that out over 10 years, it's 350,000 bucks a year. And that's something that's a lot more workable in our budget than, than the $3.5 million. But it's, the payoff is significant, the value we get for it, significantly more than the money we spend on things every day.
I would, I would agree with your comments, as well as Kevin's comments. I guess my only question would be, you've obviously talked to Larry, what, what's your sense of the timing? When would you like to try to do something in terms of a bond, and when would he actually...
I hinted at it, the timeline.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Sorry. You know, that if the money was, or if the money is approved, then, then I would start, you know, right away with the safety issues, the playground, the ADA pathways, and, you know, write down that list that I gave you.
Okay, so you're saying, start next year?
Yeah.
Basically, start next year?
Yeah.
Do something in terms of financing?
Whenever the money's available, sure.
Or sooner? Yeah. How would that, Larry, how does that dovetail with our financing?
That's all going to come up to, the next borrowing would be...
Want to do it all together, or what you're thinking?
Well, you'd have to do a portion of it. I mean, if you do, you know, a million dollars worth, you see, really, a million doesn't get you worth much. You know, as a discussion that I've had with this board before, we're going to be looking at other expenses, so a million dollars will have a big impact on the budget to, you know, for stuff, for projects, as Tim had just put it in this presentation, my recommendation is to set up the priorities, and you do it in a, at capital improvements. So it would be the next borrowing. You'd have to take a section of that money and dedicate it to borrowing. And then, right now, it would be, if you took a million dollars and put it in 2018's budget with the other expenses that we're going to see relating to the MMO, you're going to look at a substantial increase, and the tax, the tax increase could be double-digit, quite frankly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tim, the Parksport tour that you did?
Yes.
And so I guess you identified issues, and that's what this is?
Correct, yes.
Can we get, can I get a report of the issues in Westgate, number one? Number two, as I stated earlier to you, and I think I left you a message about one of the board of directors on the Westgate Hill Civic Association. I don't know how you guys feel about this, but they, they would like to participate and beautify the area at no cost to the township by, you know, by volunteering and putting, you know, shrubs and plants in, painting the bathroom. In fact, years ago, when I was in the, on the Civic Association, they bought some playground equipment. So I think the community of some of these civic associations want to work hand in hand with the township.
But I, this is what I had said in, you know, at the beginning of the presentation, that that has been part of the history.
Yeah, it's a good history, it's a great history, it's the community working together with the township.
It's a, it's a, it's a great idea, but there are unintended consequences of those things happening. So we do have to be careful, one of which, 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 which Tim brought up, is the complacency of the township to start counting on neighborhoods and civic associations.
I get that, Larry, I'm not saying that. But it has worked, and if it saves...
I mean, we had a great one in Elwell, where we built the castle, and everybody helped, and you guys did it too.
And with the township, I mean, the township's going to obviously supervise it, and we don't want to rely totally on that, but we want to include the residents for a number of reasons. Civic associations is one, because the tax issue, and then they get to see what the issues are and the cost of what it would be, so they understand what we're trying to do.
They do, but you have, we have very serious concerns about making sure that all equipment, all permanent kind of fixtures that we do there are done with public money, because they're going to be used and open to the public, the entire public. And you just, you, you want to avoid the issues of, of what ends up being, you know, kind of ownership. And I'm not criticizing what's happening here, but it's an issue, it's an issue in Merwood, it was an issue in Elwell.
Yeah, I don't think we've, we've, any, but Elwell, any of that stuff, we don't let anybody use. You know, we don't restrict in, in any of our play structures, even those that are, that are purchased by private or through donations, do we restrict anybody from using them? Am I correct?
Yeah, I think Larry, you want...
But the, the point is that it's a, that it's a continuum. You just have to be, this is, we have to constantly be vigilant, that we're not, that we're not falling back on and relying on private folks, because the more they do it, the more they are entitled to take that kind of view.
I hear what you're saying, but they don't have that kind of money anyway that we're talking about. So if we get something better than nothing, and participation...
Well, you compare, you compare a polo field, you compare a polo field to, let's say, you know, the park at Normandy, where, which is, you know, not a heck of a lot bigger than, than, than this parking area back here. And that's, $35,000 there is, is all the money they've ever seen, as opposed to $35,000 is a, is a couple little things in the huge polo park. So, so I, depending on the, depending on the park, and depending on the neighborhood, you know, a small contribution from a group of neighbors can make a huge impact in that place. We've just got to make sure that the township doesn't rely on that, and the township recognizes at all times...
Well, we've already had, of all programs already, Freedom Playground is one of the ones that was put out, the community came together, one person organized, raised money and everything.
But at a, at a massive township facility, it was a big donation thing, it was bricks, it was people doing, and all that.
But a program like that can still continue.
Right.
It's very different when you get into a small park that's kind of bordered by 25 houses, and it's kind of already been adopted by a neighborhood anyway.
I wouldn't push it off the table, but you're right, yes, you have to watch it, because I do, you do see ballparks that do, all of a sudden, one ballfield, we put up that fence. You're going to take that down for football, or something like that?
And I just, again, I'm just repeating what Tim brought up from the outset, which is the issue of township complacency, and we have to be very careful about that.
Yeah, I, it's not, I get it, it's not what I'm trying to say. We all want to be complacent and rely, rely on civic associations, but you don't want to exclude them if they're willing to help.
No, absolutely not.
Kevin and Andy, you know, they, they met with the neighbors, got back to me with equipment they'd like to see. We will take a look at it, as long as it all makes sense, then we move ahead. So certainly, that's part of the nature of parks, I think, and, and a good thing.
And one last thing is that, when putting the playgrounds together, when you're looking at a playground and redoing it, you and I spoke about this many times, the important thing is, on the surface, you have great recreational facilities, but underneath that is so much a resource for stormwater runoff. And tapping into that as well, is down at the Glen, what have you.
And Chris knows all too well.
So...
Yeah. Does know all too well.
Thank you for the efforts of, you know, changing that and putting that in there, too.
Yep, yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, number, that was number, what, four on the agenda? Thank you very much. Number five on the agenda, we have presentation, Mr. Toll, we have a presentation by RHM, a proposal for sanitary sewer lateral ordinance. We're past the time. We are. So...
Why aren't we doing it?
It is not against the law for us to continue, we just are past our slotted time.
It's, it's against our... We're starting at 9 o'clock, so we're actually early.
Yeah.
What was that?
All right. We were going to start at 9 o'clock, so we're actually early.
There you go, 15 minutes.
All right.
There's no present, there's no video or PowerPoint for this. Really, what we're here to do is to try to address certain concerns that have come over the course of the past about six months or more. Just so you folks know, and I think Mr. Wexler and some of his, your colleagues here, I've either spoken to directly, or you've attended some of our meetings, or you've gotten the word through a couple of different methods. But for the past 20-plus years, in the course of dealing with DEP and our downstream neighbors, if you will, the Sewer Authority has gotten basically 10% credit for every 100, for every, we get 10%, credit for every 100 gallons we take out of the system. So if we take 100 gallons out, we would get 10 gallons in terms of EDUs, which would be something that we could distribute to our people in our service area for new connections or for additional use and things like that. What has happened is that that has provided a predictable and calculable approach to the homeowners, to people that have any sort of development in the entire watershed. And for better part of 20 years or more, that's, that's what both DEP and the downstream, folks downstream from us, including Springfield, have been working under. Within the last six months, they simply stopped honoring that policy. It's been an unwritten policy, but it has been the policy, and, and they're not, they're not abided by it at this point. And although we have, for the past four, four years, submitted INI inflow and infiltration reports to demonstrate what we've taken out of the system, to the point where by our, by our numbers, and using the, the policy and methodology that's been in place for over 20 years, we find ourselves somewhere between 400 and 600 EDUs in positive by not granting us or giving us credit for what the work we've done over that period of time. DEP now says we're in the negative. So there's ostensibly a, like a moratorium in terms of new connections and the ability for us to grant flow to new construction and new projects. What DEP has told us is that they're not going to give us a new formula. Bill Zahn, who's one of our engineers, attended a technical meeting that was supposed to be where DEP came and told us what the, what the new approach was going to be for how we were going to get additional flow and additional ability to have new connections. And they said they had alerted us previously, and they also said they'd done something with other communities when they came to that meeting. It turned out just not to be true. So what they're, the situation we find ourselves in is that DEP is asking us to continue to do the kind of maintenance, the kind of aggressive inflow and infiltration work that we've always done. They're just not going to give us a, a calculable, predictable flow for new projects going forward. So they're going to tell us, doing what you're doing, showing, show us what efforts you're making, and we will give you something. They haven't told us how, they haven't told us how much, and they haven't told us any way that, that's going to put us in a position to be able to assure anyone that has any kind of project in our service area, that there is actually going to be the ability for them to have new connections or tie-ins, should they choose to develop in our area. So, so what's a, what's a developer going to do in that situation? You know, it's one thing if you, you have a small project and, and you, you need like a, one EDU, or you need, you know, one house, or one additional toilet, or something to, to, to put in. But if you're going to try to put in an apartment, or you're trying to build a couple of houses in a, in a, in an area that's already fairly developed, you don't want to tie your money up in something, and you don't want to commit, commit to something if you don't know that you're going to have the ability to connect to the sanitary sewer. So what we're doing, what, what I, what I've suggested, and what I proposed to you folks through a proposed ordinance, which you should have at least some version of at this point, is, is a step in the right direction. When Bill came to our, Bill Wexler came to our meeting, we actually had a much more aggressive proposal that was going to try to do more with laterals and sewer laterals, and also try to be more active on the part of both the township and, and RHM in terms of actually participating in the determination of whether or not laterals need to be fixed or replaced, or if there's any illegal, like sump pumps or tie-ins that, that, that need to be taken out. So what I put up, what you folks have before you here, is a starting point. It's not, it's more vanilla than what DEP wants us to do, it's not as aggressive as it might be, but it's, it's a place to start. So if we can do something with, with laterals in terms of whether it's a, an inspection on a point of sale, whether it's, whether, whether the township is involved, or whether you have a, a third-party inspector so that you have like a real estate, or not a real estate, like a plumber, or, or someone else who has the qualifications to make a determination, that's really what we're looking for. So we want to capture every opportunity to take out illegal sump pumps and correct laterals, and, and make sure that we're at least making progress, so that we can then tell DEP, look, we're doing something, we're actually taking assertive, aggressive, maybe not as aggressive as, as it could be, but steps towards addressing the inflow and infiltration issues. I've taken the same, or a version of this to Radnor and Markle, and we'll be meeting with those commissioners as well. Newtown would also be one of the other communities that we need to take a look at. What, what I'm suggesting is that we need to take some affirmative steps to show that DEP, show DEP that we are serious about addressing the problems that they pointed out. They've, they've put out a number of proposed ordinances that are not ordinances that have been widely loved by the... that have been widely loved by the rest of the county, and only a couple of communities have taken that step. But most, most townships and municipalities are taking some steps. So what I'm looking for from, from this board is a step in the correct, in the right direction so that we can continue to show D E P that there are things that, steps that we are taking within our service area. And it wouldn't just be Havreford. Like I said, we're looking to the other, the other municipalities in our service area to do, to do the same thing. Bill Zahn is our engineer, and I've asked him to also address you folks concerning some of the things that he's actually pointed out over the course of the last 10 years. One of the things that Bill has done is put together study surveys of places in the town, in the various townships where we have more of an inflow and infiltration problem, especially where there's like severe wet weather conditions or a bad storm or melt offs and runoffs and things, where it's measurable that these are areas that probably need attention on a, on a broader scale than, than what we've done. And although I think you folks have been the recipients of that information, I'm not sure that you've acted on it. So it's one of the things where this is a small step, there are other things that we can do. And I would ask Bill to address that, as well as, when it comes to the ordinance, that, like I said, it's a starting point. I'm not, I'm not like wedded to this particular version. If you think it's better to do it with a third-person inspector as opposed to somebody from the township, if it's a point-of-sale place where, where that gets done. All those things I think are positive steps, but it, it has to be done in a way that we can point to to show that we're making progress. Otherwise, we're not going to get the cooperation of D E P, and we're not going to have the ability to get the kind of control of and flow that, that we need to, to have a development that, that our area frankly needs and has been able to do up until recently. You know, I'll certainly answer the questions that you have, but maybe Bill can address you for a couple of minutes.
Bill, can I get a copy of the ordinance? I don't have a copy of it.
You do. Should have it on an email.
Oh, there's an email, okay.
But as I said, it's, what you folks have is a, a version that on the back there, you know, it says.
Just, just an FYI, we are going to conclude at nine.
Let me have Bill rush you and then we'll answer one question.
Very late. And I'll keep this brief, but the bottom line is what, what the D E P and Springfield are looking for as far as emphasizing trying to get the townships to move forward or emphasize more on trying to reduce wet weather inflow into the sanitary sewer system, which is really, as Bill mentioned, basement, basement sump drains, roof leaders, they're tied directly to the sanitary sewer system, which is difficult to find and identify where those locations are. But I think one thing besides the ordinance, considering that, is implementing that on maybe a point, a point-of-sale basis. The other thing I'd emphasize, and Havreford does do this, where they report how many basement sump drains are disconnected in a year. We get those reports. Most of those apply to the Cops Creek watershed, of what flows to Cops Creek. We do get some that flow to the R H M system. Radnor is also reporting those. But one thing that is relatively easy to do is emphasize that kind of documentation that comes to us, because then we can provide that to Springfield and the D E P, which shows there is progress in reducing that type of flow.
We, if I, as it is right now, when the township inspects a house, if they see roof leaders going into, directly in the sanitary lines, or sump pumps directed into, you know, basement sinks, I mean, that's, that's flagged, right, and that gets.
It's supposed to be, I can tell you that. We don't, we get, we get more reports from other townships than we do from Havreford.
Well, because everybody in Havreford's better than everybody in the other townships, I mean.
We get them from Radnor and we get them from Havreford. We have not, not even from anybody else.
Okay.
I'm just saying, anything that you can to document that is going to be a help.
We're trying, we're trying to get credit for things that we can document in a way that D E P is going to acknowledge. And those are, those are among the easier things that we can, we can do. But this is.
Mr. McCluskey, do you have a question?
Talking about is not something that would, Havreford would be carrying the burden or the ball in, in a way that the other places aren't. We're doing the same thing in the other municipalities.
Okay. Other, I guess there's risks with these lateral inspections, right? I mean, you got the occasional, you'll actually do damage doing the inspection as opposed to.
Not usually. I mean, most of them are done either with a camera or there's another way, but that's usually. Bigger plumbers and places that do this kind of work. Trouble is that if there's a, if it works, great, you know, it's a couple hundred bucks. If it doesn't, if there's a problem, it can be expensive to repair. That's the problem.
And we're going to call that a failing grade. I mean, that's, we're looking for these problems, and if this problem exists, that house isn't going to change hands.
Well, I don't, I think, I think the house is going to change hands, but there's going to be, there's going to have to be some kind of, of plan for it to be repaired. I don't, I don't think, I think there was a, I think there's a.
Change in state laws.
statute that allows for the certificate of occupancy to go through, but that doesn't, so you're not going to hold them up and say you're not getting it. But there still has to be the arrangements made in terms of a.
So you might have 12 months to do it, 18 months to do it, something like that?
Something along those lines. But the idea is to identify and then, you know, put a plan in place and, and hold them accountable. And like I said, whether it's the township that does the inspection, or whether it's some third-party and you create a, a provision, either a list or some parties that do it, I don't care. You know, I, I just want something that's, that's addressing this as a way that we can show to D E P that we are, one, conscious of the problem and taking steps to do something about it, and then, two, actually enforcing it.
But number one is the biggie. I mean, it's, it's, we get a lot of credit with the D E P for instituting a procedure to do this, to identify this and fix it.
I spoke to, there's a fellow at the D E P who I actually invited to the meeting tonight, and he chose not to come. But when I told him what the meeting was about and why, why we were doing it, he was, you know, pleased and said, well, that's, that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing we're actually looking to.
I think everybody in environmental protection is looking for other work these days, so.
Gentlemen, anything else? You all right?
Well, I, I guess I'm just, I'm confused about two things. One, why is that guy so pleased that you're doing it tonight if we're doing it in all the other townships as well, right?
He's pleased that we're taking the steps to get it done.
Okay. And then, I, I was just confused about, a couple of minutes ago, you said you get more reports of it from other townships besides Havreford, and then he said we get them from Radnor and.
Radnor and Havreford, we get more from the Cops Creek side than we do from the R H M side, but we do get reports from Havreford. Radnor has probably more reports, but also probably more problems.
Remember, the R H M authority only covers about a third of the township. The other two-thirds is the Cops Creek thing, which our sewer department does, and Joe Celia's department with the inspections. I wasn't just the one at the meeting. Joe was there at the meeting to talk about the ordinance with them, and he's the one that pointed out the reports that we give. So the preponderance, two-thirds, the reason that they don't get that many reports is, two-thirds of our township is handled by our sewer department, not the R H M authority side.
I'm not suggesting that they're not doing a good job or it's not happening. What I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is that we can get more credit if these things are actually reported in a way that, that we can document and, and give to D E P. If, if the, if the action is taken and it's not reported, we don't get credit.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. Really appreciate your time. We're going to. What's that? Okay. All the ordinance, yeah, the ordinance will be scanned and sent out to everybody.
Actually, Dan Stevens sent it. Yeah, Dan sent it out to everybody.
Thank you.
Step ahead.
The Police Department crime update, the Commissioner Committee reports will refer to the June 12th discussion for next month. And there is an amendment made for ordinance P 10 2017. And it's an addition for, it's a traffic ordinance, and this is for an addition to 1010 Darby Road for 15-minute parking. And another one for 427 Hastings for restricted park, handicap parking is what it's for. Special parking.
Special purpose parking.
Okay, does anybody have anything else for the betterment of the board?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to circulate, and I think you had this already, but I'll circulate a marked-up version of this fair redistricting proposal that was passed. This was actually Lower Marion's version. It shows the markup of it, the changes they made, which passed unanimously. So I just want to share that with the rest of the board. So we have a, I guess, a discussion on this next week. Everybody can decide.
Well, actually, that discussion, we'll move that to, to the July meeting. It's a discussion.
No, that's not a discussion. This resolution's under consideration for next week.
We're at the resolution.
Enough for everybody.
Why can't we put this on July? What's the rush that we can't talk about it in a work session?
I don't know that we'll have a work session on July 3rd. I thought we didn't have one in July.
We don't, we don't, oh, that's right, we don't have one on July 3rd.
Well, we're certainly not having one Monday night, July 3rd.
Oh, what's the hurry then? I mean, I don't understand.
I don't think it's on next, next week's agenda that has a resolution.
Why can't we hold off a bit? That's what we can talk about.
Is it on next week's or not?
I mean, I'm looking at what we have before you, and it's not.
It's not down. It's down as a discussion.
Well, no, it was a discussion this week with the idea that we were going to consider this resolution next week. Now, I don't know about anybody else, but I didn't expect 45 minutes of library today, and I did want to talk about this resolution. And, you know, it's not.
I don't think it's a, it's not an emergency that we can't talk about this at a later date. We all said that we wanted to talk about, we all said.
Right, but there's no problem with talking about it next week and considering it next week's meeting, which we did for any meeting.
No, I think we're changing what we normally do then. I mean, I'd rather have it at a work session where you could talk about it more freely.
Then let's stay right now.
No, then we're breaking our own rules about what time and the limits that we're going to put on these meetings.
We broke our own rules by putting the library on for 45 minutes, who wasn't on the agenda to speak in our public meeting today.
Okay, but we went out and told them that they couldn't be that long, and we told everybody else that they couldn't. It's, it's not on the agenda for, for next week. However, to compromise, if you want, we will put it down as a discussion. Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, I think we should discuss it next week, and I don't think, if anybody has no problems with it, and I think.
We can discuss it next week.
It's fine. I just want to discuss it next week, but then if necessary, I think somebody in new business should raise it, and we should pass it.
So let's, we won't, let's not fight about it. Didn't we just, didn't we just do this?
Didn't I just get attacked over a bike ordinance?
We both. It's not, that's not.
Well, I, I don't know, there's no rule.
By you, actually.
There's no rule that we have to stop.
Oh, it was you.
No, no, hold on a second. Look, you want to, you want a repeal law.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
You bring up at nine o'clock, you want to repeal a law at 9:05. That's not what we're talking about at all. A bunch of people came to our May meeting, talked about this. We said we'd consider it the next work session. We're now ending the work session, not getting to a couple of things on our agenda because of an arbitrary rule that we're just going to stop when we're all still here.
Gentlemen, I thought we already said we were going to put it on discussion for next week. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I, I would just like, I would just like to say, though, that Larry is right, that there was people at our meeting last month who all had the expectation that we would discuss this at the work session and vote on this next week. So I, I do think there is merit to the fact that there's going to be, there's a group of people who, everybody on this board said we were going to discuss this this week and vote on it next week.
Yeah, but, but I, I hear you, but it's not an emergency where we have to rush through this whole process with this.
90% of what we do isn't emergency.
We're saying that we're going to discuss it, and we're saying there's going to be a vote on it. But I don't understand what the urgency of this is, that you want to push this so fast without us discussing it in a calm, in a calm atmosphere.
We're going to do next week. We'll do that next week.
And having public input on some of the stuff.
Have a public input, right.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff here.
Good, I'm sorry, Mario.
Okay, so.
I can't hear Mario. Go ahead.
I just keep beating it, hold on a second, I just keep beating a dead horse here. First, we were talking about putting, putting a bicycle ordinance that required something that was really ridiculous, and that we, we needed to have public discussion on it. We are, we have an ordinance in place that says we have to stop by 8:30. We continued on to get to.
Nine o'clock.
Till nine o'clock. We are going to do something that, that, a resolution, and I think we should have a discussion next, next week and have public input. That's all. That's all we're, that's all I'm trying to say about this.
We violated an ordinance to stay till 9:05, then violated it to stay till 9:15. We weren't going to talk about it for more than 10 minutes anyway.
And, well, and last year, when we discussed eliminating the work sessions, I actually did a presentation with statistics, and as of last March, we had had 13 work sessions that were longer than 90 minutes, including six that were longer than two hours. So we have regularly gone over those numbers.
I think when we instituted the work sessions, it wasn't by ordinance, we just agreed to have a work session.
I don't know.
And tried to limit it to nine minutes.
Well, it was by ordinance. I mean, we, we did it by ordinance because we voted on it.
It's, it was probably, it was probably a resolution for the following year's schedule.
It's not an ordinance. I don't think we have an ordinance. I think we have a resolution.
It had to be a resolution.
Yeah, what's the old George Carlin joke? Can God make a rock so big he can't lift it? I mean, can we pass a resolution so important that we can't then pass a new one or break it? I mean, seriously. But it's all right, we'll talk about it next week.
Talk about it next week.
I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that. Next week, I also want to bring up, I have another issue about, so it's for discussion purposes, we're bringing it up for, for several meetings now, the issue of commercial vehicles and trucks. I've looked at 200 streets in this town where commercial vehicles are prohibited. I'd like us to discuss it. So just a point of discussion next week, but it's something I'd like us to, and I'll, I'll direct everybody to the ordinances so they could see it firsthand. And I've already talked to the chief about it. But it's August. I mean, are we holding an August work session? I mean, that's the slowest month of the year. We're not going to have a work session in July.
We could have a work session in August. As of this time.
We usually do.
We have an August work session, yes.
Okay. We normally do.
Normally do. We could have it then.
We normally don't.
Normally.
Okay, then, so we're going to add that other discussion to next week as well. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. One favor.